If everybody will have a seat, we'll go ahead and get started. Before we do start, I want to welcome a new planning board member. Trent Magid, his term expired and Sidney Franklin was appointed to the board. Welcome Sidney. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The planning board members that are here today are David Roseacker, Michael Pate, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Sidney Franklin, Christine Carnes, our vice chair, and I'm Greg Rosenbaum, chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, planning director, Eric England, acting assistant planning director, Mike Carter, acting current planning manager, Robert Lauroco, planning board administrator, Jennifer Taylor from the city law department, and Lisa Agans, our reporting secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda... This is a proceeding by the planning board to be non-controversial, have already been heard, or been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. The case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the city council for another public hearing and final disposition by the city council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the city council. Lastly, upon the advice of the law department, all communications to the board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the planning department so that they are made a part of the public record. The department will then transmit all that information to the board as well as to the rest of the public. Rezoning matters are an exception to this rule. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder on the east wall of this room, and there are no changes to the printed consent agenda. So I will get started by reading the consent cases. Agenda item number one, case C-10-19-176, C-12-19-177. Applicant Lanahaw Pacific, Inc., care of David Lanahaw. It's on for approval. Request preliminary plat approval of Blue Sage Creek II, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG and R4 to R4. This was laid over from our September 4th meeting. Location, northeast of 213th and F Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Agenda item number two, case C-10-19-146, C-12-19-147. Applicant Spire Foundation LLC. It is on for layover. The request preliminary and final plat approval of Spire Club at Pacific Reserve, a minor plat outside the city limits with waiver to section 4384D lot frontage, along with rezoning from R5 to DR. This was laid over from the August 8th meeting. Location, 1110, 1116, 1119, 1125, South 206th Circle. This is on for layover. Does anyone want to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number four, case C-7-19-156. Applicant Fairway Stores, Inc. It is on for approval. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow food sales general in the LC District. This was laid over from the September 4th meeting. Location, northeast of 132nd and Fort Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number five, case C-8-19-158. Applicant Spire Foundation LLC. It is on for layover. Request approval of a special use permit to allow outdoor sports and recreation in a DR district. This was laid over from our August 8th meeting. Location, 1110, 1116, 1119, 1125, South 206th Circle. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Okay, moving on. Agenda item number 11, case C-10-19-212, C-12-19-213. Applicant Leo Asensio. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat of Asensio, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from GI and HI to GI. Location southeast of 16th and Pratt Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. It's agenda item number 12, C-10-19-214, C-12-19-215. Applicant Royce Enterprises, Inc. It is on for layover. Request preliminary plat approval of Estates at Loveland, a subdivision inside city limits with a waiver of section 5382B cul-de-sac length, along with rezoning from R2 to R4. Location southeast of 87th and Pacific Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 13, case C-10-19-216, C-12-19-217. Applicant Lauren Johnson, Celebrity Homes, Omaha. It's on for approval. Request preliminary plat approval of Deer Crest, a subdivision outside city limits, along with rezoning from AG to R4. Location southeast of 114th and State Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Moving on. Agenda item number 14, case C-10-19-218. Applicant Leah Thrasher. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GI to CC. Location 1223 and 1231, South 14th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Moving on. Agenda item number 15, case C-10-19-225. Applicant Corey Spader. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R435 to R5. Location 4628 Capitol Ave. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 16, case C-10-19-226. Applicant Klinker Home Place LLC. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from LC to R7. Location northeast of 132nd and Fort Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 17, case C-10-19-220, C-7-19-221. Applicant St. Margaret Mary's Church. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R1 to R3, along with approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit assumed to allow religious assembly in the R3 district. Property is located within an ACI overlay district. Location northwest and northeast of 62nd and Dodge Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Moving on. Agenda item number 18, case C-10-96-261, C-10-19-131. Applicant Ted Grace. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GI to MU. Property is located within a Flood Fringe overlay district, 3727 South 149th Street, and approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement for Altech Business Park. Location northwest of 144th and F Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 19, case C-7-19-222, C-8-19-223. Applicant Baxter Cycle, Omaha. It is on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow auto sales in the CC district with approval of a conditional use permit to allow auto repair services in the CC district. A portion of the property is located within the Flood Way and Flood Fringe overlay districts. Location 13704P Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Moving on. Agenda item number 20, case C-7-19-219. Applicant Young Sioux. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit assumed to allow a daycare services general in the R6 district. Location 2902 South 20th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? And finally, agenda... Seeing none on that. Finally, agenda item number 21, case C-7-15-314. Applicant Keywind Infrastructure Group. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow surface parking in the CBD. Property is located within an ACI overlay district. Location 1515 Cummings Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, do we have a motion for those items on consent for approval?
Motion to approve items number 1, 4, 11, 12, 13, 14.
Oh, wait a second, Dave.
Not 12.
Not 12.
Over.
You want to start?
Yes, approval of items number 1, 4, 11, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, do we have a motion for the consent items for layover?
I move for layover of the agenda.
Items number 2, 5, and 12.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Roseacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes, but abstain on agenda item number 12.
Number 12?
Yes.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, those items that we just voted on that were on consent, there is no further action taken today. Those are done for this meeting. You are welcome to stay. You are welcome to leave. It's up to you. We'll wait a second here, and then we'll get started with the rest of the meeting. Boy, that took a big crowd. Okay, we'll continue on with agenda item number three, case C-7-5-216. Applicant Stonebridge Christian Church. Request approval of a major amendment to conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R4 district with a waiver of section 55186 height to allow a 37-foot tall building. This was laid over from the September 4th meeting. Location 15801 Butler Ave. May we hear from the applicant, please?
My name is Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant, Stonebridge Christian Church. The property in question today is at 15801 Butler Avenue. It is seen here outlined on the southwest corner of 156 and Butler Ave. We are requesting the amendment to an existing conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in R4 zoning. The reason for the request for the amendment is the addition of 21,000 square foot addition to the church. The white square right now is the existing assembly area and church. The expansion is shown there in the blue. The expansion holds 1,500 people and will be used for religious assembly, weddings, funerals, and receptions. The existing facility will then be converted to the uses of providing opportunities in education and religious experiences for youth and students. Along with the addition to the building, there is also a proposed expansion for parking to accommodate the additional space with the expansion of the church. The applicant is willing to meet the conditions of approval as stated in the planning board memo as dated and revised on October 2nd, 2019. Thank you.
Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none. Are there any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. Comments and questions from the board? None?
I guess one of the... One of the conditions that was on the initial report that was modified is number two with regard to the...
Trail.
The trail. And I guess we'd like to understand why that was removed. We understand that that was a part of the plat of the property, obviously intended for future inclusion in this property, and the trail terminates on the east side and takes up again on the west side of this property. And so it just seems appropriate at this time that this would be the time to... For that trail to be included in this as it was originally intended on the initial report. That's my position.
Is he aware of it? Is the applicant aware?
I don't know.
Kyle, do you want to come up, please, again with your name and address again, please?
This is Kyle Hazy, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. Jason Thielen from our office is going to speak towards that.
Okay. Thank you, Kyle. Jason?
Afternoon. Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100, here on behalf of the applicant. When that plat was brought forward on this property in 2005, the only request by the city at that time is to provide an easement for a future trail. Within that subdivision agreement, there is no determination as to who pays for that. And so we are not amending a subdivision agreement. I think Parks Department was at pre-planning board stating that that intent was that a user like this would not be responsible for that kind of cost, and that's why that was removed from the report. That really should be a subdivision cost that's vetted out through the subdivision process, the agreement process. If it was missed in 2005, I don't know. I wasn't a part of that project at that time. But I think it's unfair to saddle this user with an improvement like that when I don't think you can really show that this addition is causing the need for that trail improvement.
Is there an easement there, Jason?
There is.
Okay. So why would it be unfair to the owner of the property not to have some connectivity from the trail that ends from the east and connects to the west?
Because it's not spelled out in the subdivision agreement. Their responsibility to pay for it. That's a public improvement that would have to be spelled out in some way, shape, or form within that subdivision.
That's what we're looking at.
Yeah. Do you understand it was in the previous recommendations?
I'm talking about the subdivision agreement, though.
No, I'm talking about the planning department's previous recommendation.
Correct.
Okay. Address that.
And the Parks Department, John Williams addressed that with us and addressed that, I think, with you this morning, stating that the original intent was not to have a user be burdened by that cost, and that it should be a subdivision, right? Usually part of an SID, it's part of the Parks master plan, and that would be something that the SID as a whole would typically take care of. How that was left out or not a part of the original SID, I don't know because I don't have the background on that. All I can do is go back to 2005 subdivision agreement, states they're not responsible for paying for that. They provided an easement for it on their property, but in no way, shape, or form are they required to pay for it.
Does it state that they're not required to pay for it?
Says that there's no...
Or is it silent?
There's nothing that addresses the trail.
Does the easement itself state who is responsible for maintaining it?
In the benefit of the city. And so I think it's tough to show... Like, for example, a traffic study that is being required by the city. We're doing an addition to this project. It's adding 1,500 seats to the auditorium. I think there's a clear connection or nexus to the fact that this project potentially may be causing some kind of improvements on the public streets, and therefore a traffic study is required to show if that's true, and we've agreed to that. I don't think the same test applies to this trail. You can't say that an addition to this use permit is now causing the need for a trail that's within the city's master plan. I think that's a tough connection to make, when those types of things are typically addressed within the subdivision agreement at the time.
The planning department, it seems like in my tenure on the board, generally uses these opportunities when you have a change in a usage permit, you know, to upgrade certain things. Wouldn't this just go along with that, Jason?
I would say that's outside of what would typically I've seen. So, for example, if we're not in compliance with parking, say we're light on parking, or it's not clear on some landscape buffering, or trying to think, maybe there's some trees or some landscape things are not up to code. There's some issues across the board of the use permit that have not been addressed properly. That's the time by which that opens up. We're not asking necessarily for anything that's causing... The public improvement that ask of the city is based on the traffic study. I think that's fair, and I think that's typical of what I've seen in things in this situation. For a trail, as this... And this is not just putting in a five-foot or eight-foot trail on a flat spot. This is incredible amount of grade. There's all kinds of grading and potential retaining walls, as well as all the ADA factors that you've got to put into this trail. It's 800 feet long. That is a burden that a user should not have to burden themselves, nor would they typically agree to something like that early on where they would... They're not causing that improvement needed. They've got to put in a turn lane, or contribute to a traffic study, or traffic light, or put a traffic light based on their use causing the improvement completely, we get it, and we're fine with that. I don't think we're causing the need for a pedestrian trail connection that's part of the city's master plan that was inadvertently maybe left out of the original SID. I don't know all the history behind it. So I don't know if that was a part of the SID. It was pulled out at some point. The subdivision agreement was put together, and those areas that would typically speak to who pays for that was omitted out of that agreement.
There's a sidewalk along the north side of this lot, along the church's property. If that was missed on the original...
That's a typical improvement that a user would put in, though.
Okay. All right.
Users always have to put in their own sidewalks. A trail of this magnitude is well over and beyond anything a user would typically have to put in at their sole burden.
Any other questions for Jason? Comments?
I mean, the tough thing for us, Jason, I get what you're saying, is we weren't there in 2005 either. I mean, I don't know the whole history on the property, but if there's an easement there, if it doesn't get done now, when does it get done? And I understand your argument that it's not fair.
There's a lot of improvements all over the city that don't get done at certain times. I don't know when it gets done. I think it's unfair. I think it's... You know, I would have to consult. My legal team is usually back in the back room, but they seem to have left after the consent agenda. Except for one, but, you know, in talking with them, you know, I don't know that the city can legally make these guys actually put that in through this process. The traffic study, I think, is very easy to look at as a great example. We are causing... May potentially cause some traffic issues based on this improvement. And so therefore, I think it's a fair ask of the city to say, hey, go complete a traffic study, come back, and if there are improvements that need to be put in, you need to put those in. And we've agreed to that. But I think you have a really hard time saying this addition causes this need for this trail connection. We may want the trail connection, that's great, but if it comes back that we've got to put a traffic light in, or we've got to add some additional improvements, and then you're going to add this on top of it, I think it becomes an unfair burden to that user when they're not causing the need for the improvement. In addition, I think when we talked about it with John, we might want to look at where does that trail actually cross and come through? Is that really the best place for it? It's a mid-block crossing right now. You bring that trail straight through 256th Street with no connection anywhere else, people are going to start crossing mid-block. You really want that in right now? And I think also in addition with Parks saying, look, this really wasn't the intent that this would have burdened a user. That's why they removed it. They recognize that's probably over and beyond what they would typically require of a specific user on a project. So I think those three things together show that it's not something they're trying to get out of. I think it's just an undue cost based on what they're trying to accomplish. I don't have a good... I didn't answer your question until I went around it, but I mean, the answer is, I don't know. Maybe it comes up into a budgetary area, and it's an absolute, we'll have to put this together, and it becomes part of the Parks budget. I don't know. But it's a significant cost to this project to put that trail in, over and beyond what they should have to.
Is this lot that the church sits on, is that a part of the Stonebridge SID?
As much as I can gather, I think it was at some point. Here would be my guess if I'm trying to go back. I think it was. The fact that they don't pay taxes, they probably removed it. And at the time, it was probably, hey, we would like a trail here at some point, so when they came back and removed it and subdivided it out of a piece of property, as I can look at, they'd say, hey, we want a trail here at some point, let's put a trail easement, and we'll make sure it's on your property. And the church said, yeah, that's fine. But again, does not speak in that subdivision agreement as who's paying for that? Who's putting that in? If the city has a right to it, and it's really part of the original SID, and maybe that's some of the research that needs to be done on the city's part, maybe the SID is responsible for putting that in, and they have the right to do that because we've put an easement on the property. Allows them to come in and actually do that construction. That would make the most sense if I was going back in 2005.
What properties are all included in the SID?
I don't know. I don't know. I'd have to look at that. I didn't have time to look at what it all... What all was. It's before my time at E&amp;A, so I have zero, really little.
Just a technical question. There is quite a slope up that property line. Is it... Does that slope exceed ADA?
Oh, yeah, 2% is ADA. I mean, 2% is really flat. So, yeah, I imagine there's retaining walls, there's going to be railings, there's going to be all kinds of... Again, not just a sidewalk on the front edge, an additional four feet of concrete, right? It's a significant trail improvement.
Jason, you don't want to... I won't even ask you. I was gonna... Not going to put you on the spot for that. Okay, any other questions for Jason? Thank you. Eric?
Yeah, so we...
Yeah, so we, we've updated the, or revised the recommendation report a couple times the past couple days. In hindsight, we probably should not have, as the city's report, taken out that requirement for the trail, we should've kept that in. We do have Parks Department here is to answer any questions, we've also done some of our own research. It's true, back when the, the, the ground was platted in 2005, our records do not have a specific indication about payment for the trail, but we do know the trail easement was put in place at that time. You know, we went through all of our reports and all of our documentation, unfortunately, there's just not a lot there, so, you know, I don't wanna speculate, that was before my time at the city as well, but we know that the easement was put in place with the idea of connecting the trail in that location. At what point, I don't know. To us as city staff, with this type of major amendment and you're doing a large addition, you know, you are opening your site up for review to our policies, our regulations, our master plan. You know, with the Parks' master plan having added that trail connection in, we do believe that now would be the time to get it in place. I do understand there are, you know, steep grades and challenges on the site. I don't believe that Parks has looked at, you know, the great detail of what that trail would look like, but we definitely do have Parks here that might be a good idea to get their perspective on it. You know, Jason touched on this being beyond the scope and extent of requiring this type of improvement. Yes, it's true, usually trails are put in when a plat is gone in. However, that does not mean that it could not occur with this type of major expansion of the facility, you know? We're requiring the traffic study, any improvements that are required as a result of that, we have use permits that come in that are adjacent to unimproved rights away that we would require them to improve the street. You know, yes, the trail issue does not come up as often, but that doesn't mean that it can't be part of this review.
Eric, can I ask you a couple questions?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed the pre-meeting, so, so, maybe catching up here a little bit. So this trail connects from the east of 156th Street?
Goes all the way to 144th.
144th, so they'd have to cross 156th Street, right? So would there be a light control or lighted control to cross 156th Street then on that trail?
I'd probably defer Parks to come up, we talked about, about that in the pre-meeting, so if you want the specifics about what that could potentially look like, I think they'd be better.
Eric, I ask, you, you wanna ask for John to come up?
Yeah, I will, but I, maybe another question you can answer then, is, is, why did the city elect to take it off when it was originally on?
John will answer that.
Okay, John will answer that one, too. So I'll bring, if you bring John.
Okay. John, would you come up, please?
John Williams, City of Omaha, Parks Department, Park Planner.
So, so my question is, as you, as you probably heard, was crossing 156th Street, is there gonna be a lighted control there because it's a busy street and eventually it's gonna be four-laned, I'm gonna guess, too, right? So that's one question, and then why was it on and then taken off? What was the discussion that took place with the city?
As, as far as the crossing goes, right now, the intent would be to end the proposed trail at the sidewalk on the west side of 156. If they go south a block or so, there's a safer crossing and intersection down there that could be crossed. In terms of future widening of 156, there might be some options to look at it, could be a undercrossing of 156, there could be a pedestrian signal installed there, I think they, a system used, called a HAWK system, where it's just a pedestrian activated crossing of 156. I think there's good sightline distance there that that could work. Final details or solution haven't really been thought about as, or exactly what we would do, but the short term would be to have users go south and cross at the, the next intersection south.
So, so this trail wouldn't connect from the east directly to the west side of 156th, then?
Not short term. It, right now, as it was mentioned, you would have to cross right in the middle of the street.
Okay.
And I believe that the trail on the west side, it does not come all the way up to 156 anyway. They've stopped it short in anticipation of some future modification to make a safer crossing.
So anybody on the trail then would have to go south to the next lighted intersection? Cross?
Yes.
Okay, signal controlled and then, and then back north to connect to the trail going?
Correct.
Okay, and then what was the discussion with the city, between the city on, on why was it originally on and taken off?
Um, you know, it was, it was somewhat as the applicant had explained, I, you know, wasn't sure on what we could require and not require as far as having the trail built. There indeed is an easement in place there, I mean, I'd be our desire to have that trail built. I wasn't sure if the amendment to the use permit was something that would trigger the trail being built. I probably aired a little conservative there and had it removed.
So would, so would the city have to install any kind of a trail system from east side of 156th Street to that light, controlled access intersection and then back over and then back north again? Would they have to install trail systems or is there sidewalk, existing sidewalks or, well, you can't use sidewalks as a trail, though?
On the, on the east side of 156th?
On the east side of 156th and then crossing over to the west side of 156th.
There is existing sidewalk trail system on the east side of 156th.
There is? Going probably?
Going further east, continuing east.
Because I don't see that on the map here.
So our trail runs through here, it would come down this sidewalk and cross at this intersection here. There's this, this is wider than a normal sidewalk, it looks like it's either eight or ten feet wide, and then that connects back up north to this main spine trail through the open space. Should be noted, this is Weston Hills Park through here, and then it connects up to Torrey Pines Park on the east side of 150th, and then it would also connect up to Standing, or I'm sorry, Stone Ridge Park over here where there's a playground, water park, things like that, so it somewhat fills a gap in, in the trail system, having that piece connected.
Right. Alright, thank you.
So John, as it stands right now, that even if you're, if you're using the trail, you'd come to that T-intersection, if you will, and then go south up to Taylor rather than continue on to 156 anyway, because the crossing is located there.
Right, yeah.
But then, but then once you cross 156, there's nowhere.
Right.
There's no trail anywhere.
It's sidewalk, basically, through the neighborhood at that point.
And it doesn't re, re, begin again until you get back into the other SID there at the southwest corner of that lot.
Correct, yes.
Does the trail go west of the, of the church property, then? Is it, is, is there, is there a trail system that goes west of the church property?
It does, it picks up at 160th Street and then goes into Stone Ridge Park that has an internal trail system.
So we got a gap there, it's just?
Any other questions for John?
Thanks, John.
Great, thank you.
Yes, John.
Jason, you signaled to me, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to bring this up. This subdivision agreement that was done in 2005 spells out all the, all the things that the owner of the property, subdivision property needed to pay for. And, you know, prior to, to, and, and, you know, so I instantly think about, this is the agreement that subdivisions have with, with the city, right? It specifically calls out entire street and sidewalk construction. We differentiate trails between sidewalks specifically because the expense that goes with them. Nowhere in the obligation of section two of the subdivision agreement does it talk about the subdivision needing to pay for the sidewalk. So, so if there was to be a payment there, that's where it would be. I think the thing to consider is, going forward, if, if, if it's, if it's anytime somebody comes in for a use permit or some change to the property that the city goes, oh, you know, we should've thought about this ten, fifteen years ago, you're now burdened with that, with that cost, I think that opens up somewhat of a Pandora's Box in saying, sorry, we missed it, this is now your burden. The, the agreement between the city and the subdivision rests in this, this is what we check for when we say someone buys a piece of property and we have a title search, we look through this to see what improvement, same thing with the mixed-use development agreement, what improvements may be burdening this, this piece of property per the agreement we have with the city. And that way, we can, we can, that determines value of the land, it determines what I'm gonna pay for, it determines how, much cost I have into it. If down the road, it's like, we would've liked to have this in here, and now, now we can add it because you're coming and asking to do an addition to something and it should've been addressed down the road, I think it's a slippery slope we're going down. So, to me, if, if the contemplating, this was a contemplated to be paid for in the subdivision agreement, I don't know, again, what the contemplation was, but specifically, it's not in here. There's sections of this omitted specifically, deliberately omitted, I don't know why that was. So, but there are, there are conditions in here of what the subdivision was supposed to pay for, and they've agreed to pay for those things in addition to anything the traffic study shows.
Alright, I think you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, okay. So, this was originally included in, as a recommendation in the, in the department's report?
That's correct.
Did you contact the, the depart, planning department when you, when you saw that, or did the owner contact them, or?
Yes, we did. That's, that's how we're here today.
So were you part of the conversation?
That's, I was, have been part of the conversation, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm trying to have you see less of me.
Mike missed the, Mr. Pay, missed the pre-meet.
Oh, oh, I would, and we were not at the pre, we were not at the pre-meeting, but yes, we've been in contact with Parks and Planning and Public Works, that is correct.
We're getting him caught up.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
You bet.
Eric, did, did you complete everything you wanted to say?
Well, I guess I would just wanna touch on, yeah, the subdivision agreement is fourteen years old. Any potential improvements to the intersection of Butler and 156 that are a result of this major amendment are not accounted for in that original subdivision agreement either. So it's not like that agreement is just set in stone for eternity. I know Jason mentioned that because of their expansion and the more trips generated, that there could be improvements, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna speculate, but there could be ideas of traffic signal, turn lanes, you know, Public Works could maybe touch on those a little bit more if necessary, but, you know, the idea of that subdivision agreement being locked in place for eternity, I, I just don't think that is, is correct in looking at it. You know, let's say the church wanted to split off the eastern portion of their site, they have extra ground that they wanna develop, they come to us for a lot split, you know, through that process, we could potentially look at requiring the trail. I believe that's in our rights and, and we believe that's in our rights with the major amendment. So, just to touch on a few other items, within the report, there is a waiver for height. This district allows a height maximum of thirty-five feet, they're requesting to go up to thirty-seven feet in height, which we are supportive of for this type of civic use in a residential district. We have commonly supported those types of height waivers and the conditional use, or the, the planning board has the ability to approve, that does not have to go to the zoning board of appeals. Regarding the specific traffic study that is required, the applicant is working on that. We are recommending approval subject to the applicant providing for all identified improvements with that traffic study prior to issuance of a building permit or submittal of a certificate of occupancy hold letter with an acceptable letter of credit that could account for those improvements to be put in place. You know, we, we believe we're working with the applicant on that, you know, and we'll have to see where that traffic study ends up. Aside from that, site complies with the required parking. We are recommending approval subject to the conditions, but as I mentioned, in hindsight, we probably shouldn't have changed the report to exclude, you know, the installation of the trail, and we believe it should be put in place.
Okay, thank you, Eric. You're, you sure are welcome to, John, could you?
Again, I apologize because I just wasn't at the pre-meetings, so if I'm redundant in that, I apologize, but if the church decided not to do this project, would the city consider putting that trail system in?
It would, you know, it'd be on a long list of trail signals that need to be completed, and it'd be prioritized, and, you know, I couldn't say where it would fall in that priority listing of when it would get done. I would imagine ultimately, if it was never getting constructed, then at some point, we probably would, but, you know.
It's hard to say.
It's, yeah, it's hard to say when that would end up being on our list.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I had to ask a question.
Sure.
Thank you.
Jason, I wouldn't normally do this.
And I appreciate it.
If you can keep it short.
Short, I just, I wanna go back.
Name and address again, Jason.
Oh, Jason Thiel in ENA, ten nine oh nine Mill Valley Road, Suite 100. To Eric's point, if, is there a, somewhat like a traffic study that we can go do to prove that we're causing this trail to go in? I don't know of one. And so unlike a traffic study, you can't show me that my, while you can show me if I'm causing issues at, at Butler and 156, you can't show that all my people are gonna cause this need for them to go between 156th Street and, and 168th and not be able to go down to Taylor Street. And so, and so while, yeah, I agree with you, if we came back and subdivided it, you could request that I have a subdivision agreement, and within that subdivision agreement process, you could then require me to agree to pay for the trail, but not until then. That would be my opinion, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Any additional comments or questions from the board?
Just, maybe just a general comment, I think.
It's hard for us to reproduce the past when we can't have evidence of what's going on. What we do see is, we see a path that was laid out in the past for an intended trail. Why it wasn't included in subdivision, subdivision agreement, I don't understand. I do, to Jason's point, I do understand the, the, the challenge of trying to impose this cost on one property owner within a subdivision. It's more generally accepted, obviously, that these kinds of public works costs are spread across the subdivision, so that all parties that benefit from it also participate in the paying for it. In this case, we have one entity that would have to pay for it with, who knows, marginal use because they don't live there. And then probably the other mitigating problem is the fact that this pathway is a very challenging and a costly pathway. The more I know about it, the more I see the cost, and quite frankly, it doesn't look like in the future that that's going to be the proper place to cross anyway because of the expansion of 156th Street and the way the current paths are laid. So I'm, I guess I'm stuck in a, in a challenge with what we are obligated to do and what we should do. It, it, it seems to me like in the past, there had to have been some contemplation that this would happen in the future, and why it wasn't included in there, I can't reproduce that. It seems to me like maybe we need to research it more. I don't know what a layover was, would do to the parties, what, what challenges that would create for the church.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
So I don't have an answer yet.
Alright.
Trying to come to one.
Dave, I'm kinda in the same boat as you, like I, I'm torn between, I understand both sides of it, I do think that there's a lot more information that we can try to gather, and I hate to suggest a layover to waste the, I know there's limited time and resources that the city has and the applicant has, but it seems like there's some more conversations that could be had besides us just giving a recommendation with, with that, with all the information we have.
Alright.
If, if I could touch on an item real quick?
Sure, go ahead, Eric.
So I'm gonna read a section from the zoning code, specifically under conditional use permit, section fifty-five dash eight eighty-three, subsection I, conditions of approval. The planning board may require specific conditions of, for approval of a conditional use permit. These conditions may, may be more restrictive than base district regulations and may include, but not limited to, provision of buffer yards, landscaping and screeding, installation of erosion control measures, requirements for street improvements and dedications, improvement to access and circulation systems, rearrangement of structures and uses on the site, design character and standards for building and structures, location and character of signs, limitations or restrictions upon operations, and other conditions the planning board considers necessary to ensure compatibility with the surrounding environment and protect public health, safety, and welfare. Something else that I did not mention is, in part of our research in looking at this matter, the Parks' master plan the Parks Master Plan did not have this trail in place in 2005, when this was plotted. I believe that was put in place in 2014 with an amendment to that master plan. So, you know, that could partly answer perhaps why it wasn't locked in place, although the easement was put in place 14 years ago. So, I just wanted to point that out.
It seems to me that there's a lot of confusion around the, surrounding the issue, and before asking someone to go spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to put this trail in in a location that the city may not even really think is the best place for it, it might be best for the parties to, to talk about it first and to figure out, you know, considering there's culverts there and 156th, and maybe there's a, a better way to do this before we have somebody go put the expense in. So, I, I would support a layover to try to figure this out before we vote with fairly limited information. But, I do understand the city's position that I think we do have the authority to do it, so.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Yes, I would like to move to layover, agenda item number three.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Pete?
Just a second, Lisa, I'm sorry. Do we need to put a time limit on the layover?
I don't think so, we can work with the applicant, and, and we always try to meet with them as quickly as possible in these layover cases. I, I don't feel like a timeframe is, is necessary, we'll act in good faith to meet with them.
I'm sorry, then. Lisa, we have a motion and a second.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion to layover approved.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, agenda item number six, case C3-19-204. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the disposal of city-owned property to an interest, to an interested party. Location, 5116 South 21st Street, and Autumn, you're presenting, I think?
Good afternoon, Autumn Evans, City of Omaha Planning Department. Item number six. We received a, an interested party letter from Joseph and Mary Cabral. They have owned an adjacent property for years, and the city's owned their property, our property, since the 50s, we haven't done anything with it. They would like to build an addition onto their rental property, and, let's see here. The lot's approximately 7,000 square feet. And it would be transferred to an interested party, therefore, we'd sell it for appraised value.
Okay.
And, let's see here.
Is that it?
Planning Department recommends the approval of the disposition of this property.
All right. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments, questions from the board? Eric, do you wanna add anything?
Just keep this one brief, recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
No for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on, agenda item number seven, case C3-19-205. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of disposal of city-owned property to an interested party under community development law. Location, 3116 North 16th Street, 2115 North 26th Street, 2517 Ames Avenue, 2551 Ames Avenue, and 2006 Ohio Street. Autumn, you're presenting this also.
Yes, Autumn Evans, City of Omaha Planning Department. We are in the process of reviewing all of our inventory, and we've identified these five properties to transfer to the land bank. They would work with interested buyers to potentially build single-family housing. Let's see here, we, the September Planning Board, we are in the process of changing the zoning on three properties from general commercial to residential, and those are still in the process of doing that. The site characteristics are approximately 22,000 square feet, and all the parcels are currently vacant. Planning Department recommends approval of the disposition of these properties in order to assist in community development efforts. We would like to not include one property. When we send notifications to abiding property owners, we received an interest, interested party from a neighboring business of 3116 North 16th Street. And so, we would like to not include 3116 North 16th on this item, but we'd like to proceed with the other four properties.
Okay, thank you, Autumn. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
As Autumn mentioned, recommend approval, not to include the property at 3116 North 16th Street.
Do we have a motion?
A motion for approval, not to include the property at 3116 North 16th Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Autumn. Agenda item number eight, case C3-19-208. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the Hub 1401 TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, 1401 Jones Street. Don?
Yes, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, on behalf of the project, the Hub 1401 Project, TIF redevelopment project plan located at the southwest corner of 14th and Jones. We have an aerial view, kind of, an aerial view of the existing building, looking towards the southwest. It's a two-story brick building constructed in 1912. It's a contributing building within a National Register Historic District. The developers will be using historic preservation tax credits to help rehab this building. It's about 43,000 square feet. Basically, this entire square building occupies the entire site. The rehab is intended to provide a space for a, a mixture of office and commercial uses. They envision an innovation center, which is office space for, you know, a few, variety of nonprofit offices with shared common areas, plus perhaps a coffee shop and beanery, and they're going to construct a rooftop patio as well. Total project cost is $7,332,938 approximately. It's a rendering of the vision for the building. The developer is 1401 Jones LLC, which is owned and managed by the White Lotus Group. This project has been reviewed and approved by the TIF Committee. It meets the requirements of the city's TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the area and complies with the city's master plan. They are in the process of applying to rezone the property to CBD. Parking is not required for the property. The White Lotus Group, the owner, developer, has picked up a property a couple blocks away at 16th and Leavenworth that they do intend to make use of in terms of providing additional parking for this, for the uses here. With that, we ask for your approval.
Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Hi, Delaney Nelson, representing White Lotus Group, 10404 Essex Court. I'm here to answer any questions or give any comments on this, thank you.
Okay. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public meeting is closed. Any further comments, questions? Eric?
Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Who do you approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Franklin?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number nine, case C3-19-210. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the Benson Apartments' TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, 6152 Military Ave. Don, you're on again.
Okay, yes, so again, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, on behalf of the project. The Benson Apartments is a proposed TIF redevelopment project plan, proposed for a site in the Benson area, basically at the corner of Northwest Radio Highway and Military Avenue. This will be new construction of an apartment building on a vacant lot of about, just a little bit less than .7 acres. Be a four-story apartment building, this site. Four-story apartment building placed atop one story, one level of structured parking. Be a total of 97 apartment units, these are market rate apartment units. Be a mix of studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units. The structured parking will have 66 parking stalls. The applicants have met with the Neighborhood Association, and to my understanding, no issues have been raised at that meeting. They've also worked closely with the urban design staff in our department, City Planning Department, regarding public improvements, the site design, and the building design. Developer Sage Capital LLC. The total project cost is 14.3, 14.4 million dollars. They're requesting $2,67,135 in TIF support. Complies with the master plan, meets the criteria of our TIF program, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road. With me today is Aaron Mosier and Colin Brown with Sage Capital. One, Don always does a fantastic job presenting these projects, just want to clarify, 'cause there can never be no complaints on a project. We, we are zoned NBD, so there is no parking requirements with NBD. However, we will have a 67-stall parking garage. In addition, there's eight parking stalls on street parking. We are actually also working with a couple neighboring parcels to see if we can acquire some additional lots to address, you know, any sort of neighbor concerns over parking. Benson, I'm sure we've all been there, parking is an issue, so we're trying to be mindful of that. But with that said, we're here for any questions, and we appreciate your recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Name and address, please.
Absolutely, never forget those. Erin Feigstinger, 2719 North 49th Avenue. As a resident of Benson, I am fully in support of building density where there was none before, and as a homeowner, I guess I should be thrilled about what it's gonna do for my property values in 15 years. But I ask that you deny this application because I don't believe that this project requires a $2 million, in excess of $2 million TIF loan, and because it does not reflect the values of the community that I love, which is vibrant and diverse, especially as it pertains to being economically diverse. The developers for this project did attend our Neighborhood Association meeting on Monday night to present their vision for this project, which I very much appreciate. They were asked about a lot of topics, parking, traffic, prices, and sizes of their 97 units, if they would consider setting aside some affordable units for low-income renters who make up a substantial portion of our renters in our neighborhood, and related to the affordability question about their need for $2 million in TIF loans to complete a project whose end goal is 97 units that are currently priced above the median average rent in our neighborhood. The applicants didn't handle the last question about TIF particularly well, and that's really not their fault. One gentleman did respond that the amount of work needed to make the lot ready for this development would cost a lot of money. I don't know if you've driven past that lot, I totally understand, it's basically a dirt hill. Otherwise, the general sentiment implied on Monday evening was, why wouldn't we use TIF? And I don't blame them, they don't have to care about the affordability question because that isn't their role. Their role is to develop high-end apartments and make as much money as possible from them. Their role doesn't require them to be concerned about the things that I'm concerned about. I do not begrudge them this pursuit. The community development law does not require that they care about the affordability question. But it does raise the question, who is responsible for caring about affordability in our community? For making sure that our communities are accessible and remain accessible for the people who live there? That my neighborhood remains beautiful and diverse? Who do we go to as concerned residents, as taxpayers, who believe that incentives such as TIF should be used to level the playing field, not to build more high-end market-rate studio and junior one-bedroom apartments that are out of reach for the hundreds, if not thousands, of individuals and families who are below the poverty level and who need housing in our city? In 2018, you approved 18 of 24 TIF applications, which resulted in part in 660 new housing units. Of those 660 units, only 48 were accessible to low-income residents in our city. This is in a city where there are only 41 affordable units for every 100 families who need housing. This in a state where accessing incentives to build affordable housing is a very long and difficult process. And this in a city that makes it as easy to get millions in incentives as saying this wouldn't be possible for a prudent investor in the but-for part of a TIF application. Now, who is responsible for building equality in housing in our city? Who can we hold accountable for changing this system? In full understanding that you are not legally required to bear any responsibility for these questions, and in full understanding that my comments here today will likely have very little bearing on your decision, I thought that I would ask. I do want to ask that you accept some responsibility here as stewards of the public trust, as stewards of public monies, as people in charge of shaping our community and our city. And I ask that you exercise it, in this case, to deny the TIF loans for this project, or to ask that they develop an application and a project that reflects the values of the community, providing housing for all members of our community in return for providing them incentives that are given to them by all of the taxpayers of our community. I appreciate your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
While you're up here, so, how long have you lived in that, you live in that area?
Yeah.
How long have you lived in that area?
I've lived in that neighborhood since we moved back to Omaha in three years.
Okay.
Three years.
Do you know how long that's been a dirt hill?
I've, much longer than I've lived there.
So.
And again, I'm not opposed to building, I'm fully in support of building density where density does not exist.
Yeah, I, I, I think it'd be a real, real nice addition to the neighborhood. At one time, I've lived in Omaha my life, at one time, it was a really vibrant area, right around that, that dirt hill, right? It still is, to a certain degree, depending on which direction you go. And this might be one of those projects that might incentivize people to come in and revitalize that area as well. And I understand, and you made some very good arguments, by the way, and I appreciate the comments that you made. But you gotta start somewhere in the revitalization project.
Yeah, well, I'm one of those young professionals who tried to move into the neighborhood. I didn't need a high-end market-rate studio apartment to do it.
What do you consider high-end?
I chose to live there because it was economically diverse, and that's the place I'd like my children to grow up in.
What do you consider high-end, just curiosity?
Well, they said, and correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen that are here, but $8.50 for a studio, $9.50 for a junior one-bedroom, and I missed the one-bedroom price, which is, I lived in Chicago for 13 years, and that's about what I was paying for a one-bedroom. That was beautiful, by the lake.
All right, thank you.
I have a comment, Erin, how are you?
I'm good.
I really appreciate that passionate commentary. I am actually wondering, and actually, your advocacy for economic diversity, I'm a huge proponent of that. I'm actually wondering if the proponent, and I'm sorry, I'm forgetting your name, could come back and maybe talk to Erin's point about the question at the, at the Neighborhood Association meeting regarding why the project feels it's deserving of a more than $2 million TIF allocation.
Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road. Erin's questions are spot-on. A lot of the times when we get opposition to TIF, it's mostly because a lot of folks aren't like us in the sense that we, we've studied the statute, we know what the purpose of the TIF and the tax increment financing is supposed to do, and that's to fight blighted and substandard. So, before we can even get here and propose an application for TIF, the area has to be designated blighted and substandard. In general, that means we need to have some sort of incentive in Braskets that is the real incentive to fight blighted and substandard conditions. So, this area, Benson in particular, has been designated blighted and substandard. So, that means there's gotta be incentives for developers to come in and pay for infrastructure, public improvements, general enhancements to the area that make it more vibrant. public improvements, general enhancements to the area that make it more vibrant, kind of start getting some more economical development going in there. So what TIF allows is those true public improvements, and that's why in our application, we always have to itemize her all the public improvements that we're installing, here's their costs, and then here's all the TIF eligible expenses. In this particular project, I think we're over, I think it's one point four, one point five million dollars of TIF eligible expenses. Of those, we have about five hundred thousand dollars of true public infrastructure costs that to fund those privately, you would, it'd be tough to find a developer who's willing to go find a bank to invest five hundred thousand dollars with zero return just on public improvements. In this particular project, there's the turn lane off of Northwest Radial that's costing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars right there. That's, that's a big cost that the general public probably just doesn't understand the amount of investment developers would have to put into these projects privately. The other issue on this particular project is, it's a hill. So the special foundations and the grading that we have to do is, again, it's not a flashy cost that everybody sees day in, day out, as far as that's, I love that apartment because their grading is fantastic. No one says that. The other issue is, the City of Omaha has urban design guidelines that say, that dictate, and we met with Jed and the city staff numerous times to make sure that this product, what you're seeing, the actual tangible product, is up to city standards and with Sage Capital's involvement beyond that. If you look at their project on Forty-Ninth and Dodge, these guys do a great job of getting something that's not just an apartment complex, it's aesthetically pleasing. All of that costs a lot of money, and that's why TIF is a great incentive for any project in the City of Omaha and the state of Nebraska, generally speaking, because it helps offset the sunk cost just to make a deal a reality. So while I understand, why do you give a project two million dollars, there's a lot of public improvement costs that we have to either pay privately or use the TIF incentive, which is not necessarily taking money away from any existing property tax holders, it's the incremental value that we're creating that establishes the TIF. So, long-winded answer, but I genuinely feel that if, if there was a project, this is a great one, because it's bringing in a, a lot of, you know, there's a need here for housing, and why everyone can differ as far as what's, what's economical feasible for folks to afford, I think these rates are pretty in line with every other project that I stand up here before you all and propose as far as market rate rents.
I'm just curious, could you say again what the, what the rents are?
I, I don't want to get them wrong. I thought it was eight hundred for our studio, nine fifty for the one-bed, and two-bed is...
About twelve.
Yeah, about twelve hundred. Sorry.
He said it was a junior one-bed.
I think there's only studio and one-bed, but... So hopefully that answers your question or answers some of Erin's questions as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. I was on opposite, any, any other pro, I'm sorry, any other opponents that wish to speak? I lost my place there. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions? Eric?
Just recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved?
Agenda item number ten, KC three dash nineteen dash two eleven. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha requests approval of the Garage Lofts TIF redevelopment project plan. Location four two four South Twenty-Fourth Street, Bridget. You're on.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Get myself situated here. The Garage Lofts TIF redevelopment project plan is a proposal by Arch Icon Development, who is here. They are familiar with this area. Here is the project site, redevelopment site, highlighted or shaded in blue. This is twenty-fourth, South Twenty-Fourth Street, Harney Street, St. Mary's Avenue, just to kind of give you a contextual perspective. Arch Icon is the developer behind the Howard Street Flats, or Flats on Howard Street redevelopment project plan that was, came before you, maybe about three, three, four years ago, and that's right in here. So they're very familiar with the area, and they are looking at this site that is consists of two vacant buildings, one standalone and another L-shaped property. This is the L-shaped, and this is the standalone. What they're proposing to build, tear that down and build a, one structure that's three stories, multifamily, thirty units, and they will be three-bedroom and four-bedrooms. As opposed to the prior project, this particular project is a hundred percent for low-income housing, or low-income households, and by the fact that they are three bedrooms and four bedrooms only, it's really going to address a huge need for housing in this downtown area, and, and just housing for large families in general. So it's a really unique and interesting project to be in this particular area. I have a preliminary rendering of a site plan. So again, this is Twenty-Fourth Street, South Twenty-Fourth Street and South Twenty-Fourth Avenue, rectangular building. The front of the building is along South Twenty-Fourth Street. There's going to be thirty surface parking stalls, approximately two for ADA, and then, of course, the entrance from South Twenty-Fourth Street into the parking. There will be streetscaping along, that will be in accordance with the ACI, as well as some on-street parking along South Twenty-Fourth Street. Excuse me. In addition, there will be no zoning changes because this is zoned CBD, and so the land use is appropriate. It has been reviewed by the TIF Committee, and they have given their approval already. The amount of the TIF is right at two hundred and thirty thousand, so it's not a whole lot. It's about two point, three point eight percent of the project cost and funding. With that, I guess I will ask for your approval and let the developer speak if he has any other questions, or if you have any questions, I am here to answer.
Thank you, Bridget. Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Darren Smith, Arch Icon Development, five oh nine Walker Woodbine, Iowa five one five seven nine. Owner and developer here to answer any questions you might have about the development.
Thank you, Darren. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Bridget, would you come up, please? Again, TIF, that tool, how long have we been using that in the City of Omaha?
Since the early eighties, we've been using that tool. In the state, I honestly can't tell you, but it's been around probably since maybe the sixties, for sure the seventies, but in Omaha, since the early eighties. It originally was crafted in, I won't look at Jennifer, but if I misspeak, I'm sure she will correct me, but the intent of the law was to help with the public improvements, as Brent Beller spoke about in the previous case. So it was to help offset those costs because private development doesn't really want to have to pay for those public infrastructure improvements that bring no value to their private property site. I believe it was sometime in the eighties that the law was changed to allow for the rehab costs, rehab and for preservation of older structures. And so that just kind of catapulted the use of that tool throughout the state and especially in Omaha. So that's a, maybe more than you wanted to know.
How long have you been on the TIF Committee?
I actually have been on the TIF Committee maybe just, might be a year or short of a year, but I've been a part of the TIF program for about...
Okay, I didn't ask the question correctly. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
About nine to ten years.
Yeah. I guess, I wished I would have said this when Erin was here. She made some, you know, very good points, articulate, great, and I wished I would have said this when she was here, but because of your, the TIF Committee and your TIF program, a planning department that works well with the development, developers, a pro-development mayor and administration, I got to tell you, I was, I'm just more and more impressed with our downtown as a result of projects that would not have gone forward with, without TIF, and the diversity and the vibrancy that it's brought to the downtown. I've been downtown quite a bit here lately on some projects, but Saturday night, Friday night and Saturday night, I was down at the CHI, they had a rodeo down there, went Friday and Saturday, and just driving down through the downtown at that time of night, six-thirty, seven o'clock, you know, walking across the street to the Marriott, and they had a band playing, the Hilton, and just everything that's going on, it's impressive. And when Erin was talking about vibrancy and, and diversity, it's, it's there, you know? And here's a project for maybe lower-income people, but, you know, it's, it, there's, there's diversity, and the last project maybe Erin thought was an upper-income people, but that brings diversity to the Benson area. So it's, I don't know, it's great work, and I, I'm impressed with the turnaround of the city, how well it looks and what it looks, you know, just the vibrancy there is out there, so...
Yeah, I would just say, I think we're all pleased when we get to be a part of the changing landscape we've seen in the City of Omaha and, and creating these destinations across Omaha. I know, growing up in Omaha, we didn't have that when I was here. It was downtown and maybe Benson, but now you have, we as residents, as well as visitors, have so many places to go and spend our money and/or to live, so it really has been Omaha's unique and primary tool to spur economic development and community revitalization.
Bridget, how does our adjacent application of TIF compare to similar cities around the Midwest or other states?
I'm, I'm, I've just recently started talking to a few. It's, it's similar. We may be similar to Iowa, and of course, similar to Lincoln, but I would say to urban areas, we're probably similar in how we use, utilize the tool, allowing, of course, for public infrastructure, for all kinds of rehab and new construction projects, but each, each city and state is going to be different because the law that governs how TIF is used is per state, and so each state is going to determine how they want to utilize that type of tool and, and all the mechanisms that are a part of it. So there, it's uniquely different, but I think we're able to achieve a lot of the same end goals.
Any other comments or questions? Did I, did I close the public hearing? I thought I did. I asked for opponents, didn't I? All right. Eric, do you have anything else to add?
Just recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved?
I think that was our last agenda item. Do we have a motion for the minutes for the pre-meeting from last month?
I do have a correction to the pre-meeting minutes. On number twenty-eight at the end, I would just like to add a sentence that Ms. Carnes returned to the meeting. It noted that I recused myself and left the room, but it did not note when I returned, so I just would like that noted at the end of agenda item number twenty-eight.
Okay.
With that, with that change, I would move for approval of the pre-meeting minutes from the August seventh, two thousand and nineteen, pre-meeting.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
I don't know what to say.
Okay. Motion approved?
You didn't, I didn't vote.
Oh, you want to vote? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, now motion approved.
Okay, do we have a motion on the public hearing meetings from last month?
Motion to approve, second.
Have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Carnes?
You want, you want to change it? Great, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
And I'm voting yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved?
And let me again say welcome to Sidney. Thank you for agreeing to be a part of this board.
Of course.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn, second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved to adjourn at two fifty-five.